The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll, please?
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Tom Grady. Alderman Ted Grady. Alderman Rappella. Alderman Nichols. Alderman Isenak. Alderman Sevigny. Alderman Hammond. All are present.
Thank you. The first thing on the agenda this evening is the report of department head staff and consultants. We have the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through D and Communications E, F, and G.
So, motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city.
That's good. You really don't want to hear. No, just one thought I have, living out there. You know, we turn off to get back into the Lexington development, as you mentioned last time. And just one thing that happened within the last month is heading home on 114 Highway 10 going east at rush hour in the evening, everybody leaving to get, you know, back home. It's so much traffic and it's such a short exit to get off of 114 to turn to the left. You know, there is a distance that you can get off the highway, but when people are going 60 to 65 miles an hour and with a lot of cars trying to turn left and everybody in the two-lane road heading east, just wondering if you could get on your schedule sometime to look at it. I know that probably has to go through the state to do something different, but before an accident happens, I know there's been deaths already at Kernan Crossing. I'd hate to get rear-ended like what I was kind of afraid was going to happen when I was getting off on that particular time. So, if you could just take a peek at it and give it consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We are now on the consent agenda, and at this time, I'd like for us to approve the common council minutes of... Yeah, it's working. It's here.
It's a motion?
Common council minutes of 4, 3 of 23. Maybe you got to hit it with your pen, huh?
So, there's a motion to approve the common council meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second by Alderman Grady. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item 2 is the Board of Public Works. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. At this time, it is recommended by the Board of Public Works that we deny Contract Unit 2023-02, the Public Protection Facility Office remodel. That would be part of the Police Department in the amount of $103,774,000.
Is there a second? So, motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item 2 is the Board of Public Works. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. At this time, it is recommended by the Board of Public Works that we deny Contract Unit 2023-02, the Public Protection Facility Office remodel. That would be part of the Police Department in the amount of $103,774,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second by Alderman Grady. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item 2 is the Board of Public Works. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. At this time, it is recommended by the Board of Public Works that we deny Contract Unit 2023-02, the Public Protection Facility Office remodel. That would be part of the Police Department in the amount of $103,774,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item 2 is the Board of Public Works. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. At this time, it is recommended by the Board of Public Works that we deny Contract Unit 2023-02, the Public Protection Facility Office remodel. That would be part of the Police Department in the amount of $103,774,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item 2 is the Board of Public Works. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. At this time, it is recommended by the Board of Public Works that we deny Contract Unit 2023-02, the Public Protection Facility Office remodel. That would be part of the Police Department in the amount of $103,774,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item 2 is the Board of Public Works. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. At this time, it is recommended by the Board of Public Works that we deny Contract Unit 2023-02, the Public Protection Facility Office remodel. That would be part of the Police Department in the amount of $103,774,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? We can just do voice votes. You just want to do a voice vote.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item 4 is the approval for payment to Don Hippis and Sons. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the approval. Recommended by the Board of Public Works of payment to Don Hippis and Sons Construction Incorporated, MCM09-22-00335, for the 2023 sanitary sewer and water main reconstruction. And this is an addition in the amount of $55,369.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item 4 is the approval for payment to Don Hippis and Sons. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the approval. Recommended by the Board of Public Works of payment to Don Hippis and Sons Construction Incorporated, MCM09-22-00335, for the 2023 sanitary sewer and water main reconstruction. That amount is $85,942.94.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5 is the approval of a payment to Advanced Construction. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the approval. Recommended by the Board of Public Works for the payment to Advanced Construction Incorporated. That is Contract Unit 2023-01 for the Brent Underground Stormwater in the amount of $338,683.35. And that is our second payment.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item 2 is a liquor license for Tony's Take-O-Tap LLC. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I have a question before a motion. I noticed tucked in here was a outdoor food and alcoholic beverage service application, and those are typically approved by the common council. Should I include that in the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for confirming.
You're welcome. Move to approve the liquor license for Tony's Take-O-Tap LLC, doing business as Tony's Take-O-Tap located at 10 Take-O Street, for the remainder of the licensing period ending June 30, 2023, along with the outdoor food and alcoholic beverage service application, which ends July 1, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second by Alderman Grady. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item 4 is the approval for payment to Don Hippis and Sons. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the approval. Recommended by the Board of Public Works of payment to Don Hippis and Sons Construction Incorporated, MCM09-22-00335, for the 2023 sanitary sewer and water main reconstruction. That amount is $85,942.94.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item 5 is the approval of a payment to Advanced Construction. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the approval. Recommended by the Board of Public Works for the payment to Advanced Construction Incorporated. That is Contract Unit 2023-01 for the Brent Underground Stormwater in the amount of $338,683.35. And that is our second payment.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item 5 is the approval of a payment to Advanced Construction. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the approval. Recommended by the Board of Public Works for the payment to Advanced Construction Incorporated. That is Contract Unit 2023-01 for the Brent Underground Stormwater in the amount of $338,683.35. And that is our second payment.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of March 31 through April 13, 2023, in the amount of $3,947,877.56.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Rappella. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of March 31 through April 13, 2023, in the amount of $3,947,877.56.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Rappella. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item 2 is a liquor license for Tony's Take-O-Tap LLC. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I have a question.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the change order to Don Hippis and Sons Construction Incorporated, Contract Unit Number MCM09-22-00335, for the 2023 sanitary sewer and water main reconstruction. And this is an addition in the amount of $55,369,69.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item 5 is the approval of a payment to Advanced Construction. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the approval. Recommended by the Board of Public Works for the payment to Advanced Construction Incorporated. That is Contract Unit 2023-01 for the Brent Underground Stormwater in the amount of $338,683.35. And that is our second payment.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion is second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of March 31 through April 13, 2023, in the amount of $3,947,877.56.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Rappella. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item 3 and 4. First off, if there's no objections, I'd like to take item 4 first because I think we may want to go into closed session on item 3. But also, our realtor is here, I believe. Correct? We didn't tell him it was a 5 o'clock meeting. We told him it was a 6 o'clock meeting, so he did quickly come up. If there's no objections, Alderman... Alderman... Director Schrader?
Yeah, so, again, what we have in front of us is offers to purchase, both the lots that were acquired by the county this past fall, both on 127 First Street and 1220 Grove Street. I would like to introduce Kyle Keogh. As the mayor had noted, I told him the meeting was at 6:00, so I'm not sure how prepared he is. But Kyle, did you want to say anything regarding the offers? Otherwise, it is kind of laid out within the packet as well.
Sure, I could say some general styles. I'll step in.
Unfortunately, that mic isn't... You want to go over by Director... No, it's not.
I heard.
Did it?
Test.
Oh, it does?
We're up and running. Received offers on both the property within a week of being listed, both of them... The one on Grove Street received three different offers. If you were to have any questions on any of those offers. And then First Street received an offer as well. So, I guess I'm here for any general questions. Everything looks pretty standard in terms of the offer verbiage.
Okay, thank you. So, if we want to do offer to purchase on 1220 Grove Street first, is there a motion or discussion? Whoops. Becky had discussion, I believe, or motion. I'm not sure.
Now, oh, now it's on. All right. It's been blinking red the whole time. Move to approve the offer to purchase of 1220 Grove Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I was just... Weren't there multiple offers in here? So, I wanted to make sure that were.
I'm sorry. Yes, there were.
That were approving?
For the offer to purchase of 1220 Grove Street by Wildflower Development, I believe it's called, LLC.
So, approve the offer of Wildflower Development as listed in the memo at $26,000. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
And second? There's a motion and a second? Just... Is there discussion? Seeing no... Alderman Rappella?
Kyle, is that kind of like the going rate for those... I know there's not many lots on Grove Street or Ida Street, but...
Yeah, the going rate was right about where they were listed, at the 229. I think that the range in pricing was probably anywhere from sold lots from $19,000 to $25,000, but this was like right in the middle there. So, I mean, I haven't had a lot as competitive as this Grove Street one with having three offers drafted on it.
Sure.
So, I mean, I think that the person's probably paying... It's a good, strong competitive price.
Now, I know the houses either side are probably like duplexes, correct?
One of them is, and one of them's a single family.
Okay. The corner one is a single family, then?
Yes.
So, no idea is another duplex going up or a house...
From my understanding and from the verbiage that we gave is that, you know, single family was preferred, and if they wanted to do something besides single family, that they would have had to draft that into the offer.
Okay, and so far, it has not been drafted into the offer?
Correct, yeah. It was not drafted into the offer, so it's expected to be a single-family home.
Let's do this right away. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kyle. Ready to go down?
I do have a question.
Alderman Nichols?
As part of staff's recommendation, we were to direct them to draft and execute a land purchase and development agreement based on the terms of the offer. Should that be included in the motion?
The offer is stated as as recommended by staff in the memo.
Okay.
And that was included, and staff's memo does include subsections A through F, and that would be indicated in terms of the land purchase agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? My guess is Tom's is not going to work. Did it work? Yeah.[820.14]
Price. So twenty-two-nine.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Or twenty-three thousand. I should verify. I think it's twenty-three thousand.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Pilot. Oh, thanks Laura. Laura's got the touch. So this offer did have a maximum pilot on it of five hundred dollars. That would not typically be our standard payment in lieu of taxes. That would be calculated based upon the value of the property against the mill rate. So that is one thing that is slightly different about this offer versus the others.
Does anyone have questions? Alderman Nichols?
Aye. If. 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 If.
Our final item this evening is a presentation to Alderman Schmidt. We want to take this opportunity to thank her for her service to the city of Manassia. We've had a wonderful time on the Plan Commission together and we appreciate all of her background knowledge that she's gained over the years being an elected official both here and some other communities around the area. We'll miss you greatly, Anne. And we have a nice plaque for you. Thank you for your years of service and commitment to helping Manassia achieve its new horizon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I can. I was. Oh. Oh, my God.
She wants to say something first.
Probably not going to work. I have a lot of my voice.
There it goes.
Oh, I wanted to say something.
Yep. It seemed, it sounded like it did, too.
I don't know. I don't think it is, but anyway.
No, it's not.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that one's not. Okay, I just want to say thanks for, you know, letting me be part of this journey over the last, you know, almost, well, year and a half-ish, almost two years. I've enjoyed doing the work I've done with the city. It's just time for me to move on and enjoy my retirement a little bit more. And I'll still teach, though, this summer. You know, they asked me to still teach, so I'll still teach my water class this summer. But I've enjoyed being part of the city of Manassia and I'm still a homeowner here in the city of Manassia, so what you guys do still affects me. So just want to say thank you and I'll miss, you know, hanging out with you guys like this, but I'm sure I'll be seeing all of you around the city, so, thank you.
So before we move on to public comments and sign die, I just want to thank Anne for her service on a personal level. Anne and I became a little more closer this past year, I think, mainly because I'm jealous of her. She loves Hawaii and she always gets to go and I, it's one of my bucket challenges in the future, so one day I might be able to go. But I'm also very, and hopefully she doesn't get mad at me for saying this, but I'm very proud of her. She is very happy because she found someone special. And that's incredible and I'm very happy for you for that. And not only that, but she's now another new grandma. And she just showed the council some of the pictures and Anne has, was born here, raised here, educated here, went to Manassia High. She's a Manassia girl and that's the kind of person I like on the council. And thank you so much. I hope I speak for the council for your wonderful service that you provided this community. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
I almost did.
I heard you.
The next item on the agenda is public comments on any matter that was listed on the agenda. Is there anyone? No? And with that, Alderman Schmidt, would you like to?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sign die.
Sign die.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the city of Manassia New Common Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
So being this is the new council this evening, we do have four of our members that would need to be sworn in and our clerk, Valerie Newman, will be doing that honor with our four new aldermen from the even-numbered districts, odd-numbered districts. Odd-numbered districts, sorry. Usually we would stand in the front.
Do that, Tom, Mayor?
Yes.
One, three.
I want to stand in front of the mayor.
Go for it.
Oh, give me glasses.
Just repeat after.
Yeah.
You're reading all at the same time. I read next to there.
I guess.
Please read.
Aye.
Aye. Stan Sevenik.
I, Kirsten Lewis.
I, Rebecca Nichols.
I, Ted Grady.
Have been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
For the city of Manassia.
For the city of Manassia.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Then she's going to give your oath to sign as well? It makes really exciting TV, I'm sure. We're just going to come over here.
Oh, no. You're the one that signs, right?
Yeah, I signed that one. This is the one.
Do you need extra pens?
Okay, go ahead.
Yep.
And click back keys and then we'll return them to you later or what?
Should I?
You already signed yours, so.
I know, but.
Okay.
I didn't actually sign my oath. I've signed my, I got sworn in, so.
Okay. Well, if you want to, do you want to sign yours as well?
Yeah.
Just sign them as, right now as well.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all the new elected officials and one new elected official. So welcome, Kirsten. We're excited to have you here and looking forward to working as a team. So the first item on the agenda is the report of department heads, staff and consultants. We have the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion?
Nothing.
Oh, do we need roll call again, too, I guess? Go for it.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Isenak.
Here.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
All are present.
Communications?
Your mic's not working.
Can you hear me now? Yep. All right. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A and Communications B, C, D and E.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Christian, I believe you are nineteen years old?
Yes.
Well, here's why I'm asking it.
I know why.
I originally was the youngest council member. I believe that she has broken that record because I turned twenty later on. So congratulations. You are now the youngest alderperson in the city of Manassia. And then we could take our vote, Mayor.
Any other discussion on minutes and communications? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? The motion carries. The first item this evening is ordinances and resolutions. It's Resolution fourteen and it's adopting the rules of the common council and mayor. Do we have a motion?
I was waiting for that. Mayor's excited today.
I'm excited to keep skipping every other one. Public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment this evening? Where is your other mic? Because I don't know if that mic's going to work either. My guess is no.
No.
My guess is no.
We'll give you the karaoke, karaoke mic, so you have to sing a little bit first.
Oh, it's flashing. Is that working? Thank you very much. Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I figured that's why the mayor had skipped over public comment. And you were lucky tonight because just like last year, I forgot that the meeting started at five, so I'm only here for this one. Just a few things I wanted to ask. With the new council, whoever is elected Chair of Personnel and Chair of Administration, if you would be so kind as to include a portion for public comment on your agenda. Apparently that's not included. Secondly, under the resolution that the mayor just mentioned, the rules of the common council, referring to the common council agenda outline, I've never been in favor of the consent agenda, but when being used, it is to include routine and non-controversial items. They're voted on in block and that's typically here Minutes, Communications, so I'm wondering why those are listed under report a department has. And Minutes and Communications are not included under the consent agenda because perhaps someone from the public would like to comment on them. And also regarding the consent agenda, that it be limited to those items and not include things that are just referred to by another committee. Because it will not have a separate, under the open records law, it will not show a separate vote on an individual item if it's in the consent agenda. And perhaps the city attorney would like to look into that. And then under, I can't go without commenting on appointments. Both Alderman Graddys are well-qualified to be in the appointments to Park and Rec and Landmarks, but they have been in those appointments for several years now. And I'm just asking if it isn't time that we give another alderman the opportunity and shift things around that you can learn about all the different departments in the city and not just focus on those that you are accustomed to. And there is more, but I will leave it at that for tonight. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment this evening?
Dan Evans, A-59 Lotus Street. I debated if I wanted to get up and bring this subject up, but seeing we have a new council and we do have people here that still want to let their grass grow long, I thought I would kind of give a little interesting, lighthearted report from this last week when it was so beautiful out. I don't know if any of you had a chance to read the packet on bees that I passed on to the meeting, Mr. Mayor? I don't know if anybody had a chance to read that yet. But it made comment that the bees would come out when the willows were in bloom or in blossom. Didn't know what to make of it. It was very interesting. You two gentlemen should really read it along with anybody else that want to let their grass grow for the bees to feed on, what, flowers, the weed tops? Okay? Well, we know the flowers and the weeds aren't in, the weedy flowers from your yard aren't in bloom yet. But this weekend, or this past week with the beautiful weather, I did have a bunch of crocuses that were in full bloom. They were beautiful, right here on the edge of our patio. Didn't see a single bee on them, didn't even think about it. Hadn't seen a bee yet until I got to the back lot line where we planted a pussy willow about three years ago to make a beautiful screen, should we say, privacy of a bit for our yard. And that pussy willow is now about eight feet, six to eight feet tall, really open, full of pussy willows that are blossoming out and just full of bees. It was gorgeous. The bees were healthy, alive and well. And as flowers, the crocuses, not a single bee. I really think you need to do a lot of thought of just listening to some professor that now all of a sudden a report is being rebuked. I'm not denying that letting the weeds in your yard grow and not fertilizing, definitely you can't be fertilizing, killing, you know, or should we say insecticiding and killing. You know, I'll go along with all of that. But you guys start driving outside of your city of Manassia when May goes along and see what it looks like in Appleton. I've driven those roads for the last two, three years as no more May has been going and it looks like a bunch of slum landlords. It really does. And I really don't know that you need to let your grass grow to, there's other ways of supporting bees than letting the neighborhoods just go to looking like slums. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Okay, now seeing no one else, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for R-1423. This resolution sets up the rules for the common council and the mayor.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Repella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevenik.
Aye.
Alderman Hammond.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Oh, and Mayor. A motion carries nine-zero.
Thank you. Item M is appointments. The first are the common council appointments and we would, I would ask for nominations for each of these three. If there's a single nomination, we'll just cast unanimous ballot for that person. If there are multiple candidates, we will do a voice vote. If there are more than two, we will drop the third or future candidates until we get down to someone who has a majority. So the first one is for council president, Alderman Grady. Oh, yeah, it is Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to appoint District Three Alderman Stan Sevenik, council president.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations for the position of council president, I'll ask the clerk cast unanimous ballot for Stan Sevenik and congratulations. You are council president.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The second item is an alderman member to the Plan Commission. Is there a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Tom Grady.
Are there any other nominations for the member of the Plan Commission? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there are no other nominations, I would ask the clerk cast unanimous ballot for Alderman Tom Grady as our council representative to the Plan Commission. Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
And the third item is an alternate member to the Plan Commission. Are there nominations? Alderman Sevenik?
I'd like to nominate Alderman Isenak.
Are there, there is a nomination for Alderman Isenak? Are there any other nominations for the alternate member for the Plan Commission? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I would ask that the clerk cast unanimous ballot for Alderman Isenak for our alternate, alternate member for the Plan Commission. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll recess to the committees and I believe the clerk runs the administration committee. Is there a motion to recess?
Mayor, I'll move that we recess into committees.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned to committee. We're returning to the common council at this point. We did recess a few minutes back and we are at item O, appointments on the new council at this point. There are, the first item is the common council appointments. The first is a member of the protocol committee. I would ask for nominations at this point. Are there any nominations? Alderman Sevenik?
I'd like to nominate Austin Hammond to the protocol committee.
Are there other nominations to the protocol committee? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there are no other nominations, I ask the clerk cast unanimous ballot for Alderman Hammond as our council member to the protocol committee. Item B is a member of the IT Steering Committee. It would be the Chair of the Administration Committee unless there is another nomination for someone else. Seeing that there are no other nominations, I would ask the clerk record the Chair of the IT Steering Committee as Alderman Nichols. Congratulations. By the way, congratulations to Alderman Hammond, too. I forgot that for.
I did it for you.
Item C is the Nina Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Committee. The council president is automatically placed on there as is the committee, the Personnel Committee Chair, so we don't need any action on that. Item D is a council appointment to the Sustainability Committee. So for the council member for the Sustainability Committee, do we have nominations? Alderman Sevenik?
I'd like to nominate Alderman Austin Hammond.
Are there any other nominations to the Sustainability Committee? Are there any other nominations? Other nominations? Seeing that there are no other nominations, I ask the clerk cast unanimous ballot for Alderman Hammond as our alderman rep to the Sustainability Committee. Congratulations. You're getting a run here. Item two is mayor's appointments. There are, what, five? You can either take these as a group or separately, however you'd like to do that.
If it's okay with the body, I'd like to take them as a group.
for someone else. Seeing that there are no other nominations, I would ask the clerk record the Chair of the IT Steering Committee as Alderman Nichols. Congratulations. By the way, congratulations to Alderman Hammond, too. I forgot that for...
I did it for you.
Item C is the NINA Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Committee. The council president is automatically placed on there, as is the committee... The Personnel Committee Chair, so we don't need any action on that. Item D is a council appointment to the Sustainability Committee. So for the council member for the Sustainability Committee, do we have nominations? Alderman Sevigny?
I'd like to nominate Alderman Austin Hammond.
Are there any other nominations to the Sustainability Committee? Are there any other nominations? Other nominations? Seeing that there are no other nominations, I ask the clerk cast unanimous ballot for Alderman Hammond as our alderman rep to the Sustainability Committee. Congratulations. You're getting a run here. Item 2 is mayor's appointments. There are, what, five? You can either take these as a group or separately, however you'd like to do that.
If it's okay with the body, I'd like to take them as a group. So at this time, I would like for us to approve the mayor's appointments to, one, the Park and Rec, the Landmarks, the NINA Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Committee, the Police Commission, and the Sustainability Committee.
Is there a second? Sure.
Yeah.
And just for the public's awareness, I'll read who the members are. So we are looking to appoint Alderman Ted Grady to the Park and Rec Board, Alderman Tom Grady to the Landmark Commission, Alderman Lewis to the NINA Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Committee, to reappoint James Meinike to the Police Commission, and appointment of Angie Demers to the Sustainability Committee. Do we have any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item Q is public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Seeing no one, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
The University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about city of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.